We will have a moment of silent meditation, then pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It is August fourteenth. It is ten o'clock, and all three county commissioners are here: Tom Bloom, Ed Hawkins, and Sean Secor, in case everyone needed to know our names. We will now have consents and approval, and we have a substitute county administrator. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning. We have fifty-five exoneration listings for forty-six thousand eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. We have one create statement listing for eight hundred fifty-five dollars and eleven cents. Vouchers: General County, three hundred eleven thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Cole Severance, nineteen thousand nine hundred forty-six. Chestnut Ridge Park, three hundred seventy-two dollars. Camp Muffley, six thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Mason Dixon Park, two thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Assessor's valuation, three thousand two hundred four dollars fifty-eight cents. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, three thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and forty cents. Purchasing card vouchers: General County, eighteen thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and nine cents. Cole Severance, thirty-seven dollars and five cents. Madred Strick Court, sixty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Nine One One, ten thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Camp Muffley, one thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Mason Dixon Park, forty-seven dollars twenty-two cents. Assessor's valuation, two thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars and six cents for a voucher total of three hundred eighty thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. We have position vacancies for the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, the Development Authority, the Building Commission, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, and Abandoned and Delapidated Enforcement Agency. We have fiduciary orders for August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and then we have also a letter received regarding the estate of Robert Harrington.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With the letter regarding the estate, do we have to do that special, separate, or just since we had the hearing?
Well, we received a letter from the heirs. This is the one we had the meeting on.
Oh, okay.
The extension.
Oh, okay.
At that time, we had given a ninety-day deadline for Karen Hall, who handles the estate, to provide an update, and we also said we wanted it closed within six months. Karen, the deadline would have been August seventh. Karen provided an update, which is filed in the clerk's office, on August second, and she still says it's on schedule to be closed within our six-month deadline. So, I would, it'd be my opinion that we would deny the request to remove Ms. Hall, and as they, she is filling the requirements that we had put on her when we all met. At this time, that's what they want, is they further their request to have her removed, and she's doing what we told her to do.
She's reading the requirements.
And what the family agreed at that time. So, I removed it. It'd be my opinion that we replied at her letter that at this time, we're denying the request, and we're going to let the process run its course.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Great. Is that it, before I move on? Okay, great. Introduction of new employees, personnel. We have the Sheriff's Department here.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. The sheriff seeks your approval on the appointment of Terry Boyard. He is a former Mylan, longtime Mylan employee, who now we would like to have him join our court security division as to fill a vacancy as a full-time court security officer eligible for benefits effective on August the sixteenth.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead to have it.
Okay. Moving on, comments from the public. At this time, is there anyone who'd like to come speak before us? We would have you come down, state your name, your address, and we'd love to hear from you. We'll open it up on a trace. That's all I know. Okay, there's no one here. We'll move on. Oh, we have some great news. Patty Showers Ryan, president of Your Community Foundation.
Grants.
Oh, grants. Well, I was gonna move on, but, okay. Sorry. I knew I made a mistake, so I was moving on like no one would realize it, but they did. Okay, grants. Colleen Coon. Hi, Colleen. You're not out there. That's the problem.
I know. I'm in a different location.
Yes.
We have received the grant contract for the Day Report Center. They are receiving a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, you will have to sign the contract, certification regarding lobbying, the EEOP certification, and the standards and federal conditions, and then I have a resolution, which reads, "The Montegalia County Commission met on Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, with a quorum present and passed the following resolution. Be resolved that the Montegalia County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Thomas C. Bloom, President of the Montegalia County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with Division of Administrative Services, Justice and Community Services Section to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Program." So, there's that.
Want to make motion on that first?
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then I have requests for reimbursements. The first one is the Day Report Center grant in the amount of twenty thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. The Governor's Highway Safety Program Impaired Driving in the amount of three thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and nine cents. And another Governor's Highway Safety Program Save Communities in the amount of one hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any other?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Now, I'll go to lucky number seven. Patty Showers Ryan, president of Your Community Foundation, National Nonprofit Day proclamation. And we have a number of them, but if you wanted to read one, and then just the other names of them, so we don't have to do fifteen of them.
Well, good morning. I'd like to introduce Megan Yekini. Megan works in Montegalia County with Key Logic. She's a senior business analyst, and she also serves on our grant committee with YCF. So, I wanted to make sure we were able to bring her to participate today as we receive these proclamations. National Nonprofit Day is this Saturday, August seventeenth, and YCF, in partnership with West Virginia University, are recognizing some nonprofits in Montegalia County. But I think it's important that we recognize all the important nonprofits in our region. They do great work for our citizens. So, we did request proclamations for thirteen nonprofits. So, as you said, Commissioner Bloom, I'll just read one of those, and then I was gonna let Megan read the names of the nonprofits. "Whereas, since the first federal income tax on corporations, the Tariff Act of eighteen ninety-four was signed into law on August seventeenth, eighteen ninety-four, and included exemptions for nonprofit charitable organizations, which the exemptions remain part of the law and have provided significant benefits to the citizens of the state of West Virginia. And whereas, nonprofit charitable organizations strengthen communities, address vital societal concerns, and enhance the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas, in two thousand seventeen, Sharita J. Herring, a renowned speaker, bestselling author, and business strategist, founded National Nonprofit Day to educate, enlighten, and empower others to make a difference while acknowledging those who are in the trenches impacting lives daily. And whereas, many citizens of West Virginia, through nonprofit organizations, participate in and organize numerous activities and service projects to improve their communities. And whereas, it is important to recognize on a state, regional, and local level the benefits these organizations bestow on our society. And whereas, Your Community Foundation of North Central West Virginia and West Virginia University, in conjunction with National Nonprofit Day, wish to join with the residents of North Central West Virginia and Montegalia County to celebrate the many contributions nonprofit charitable organizations make. Now, therefore, we, the members of the County Commission of Montegalia County, West Virginia, do hereby declare Saturday, August seventeenth, as Nonprofit Day in Montegalia County, and we encourage all the citizens of the county to support and engage in philanthropic efforts to make Montegalia County a better place to live. Adopted this day, the fourteenth day of August, two thousand and nineteen." So, I'll let Megan read the names of the thirteen nonprofits that are receiving one of these proclamations.
Casa for Kids of Mon and Preston Counties. Friends of Deckers Creek. Girls on the Run of North Central West Virginia. Libira. Mon County Health Department Dentistry. Morgantown Theater Company. Empty Pockets Theater. Mountaineer Area Council of Boy Scouts of America. Pantry Plus More. Pop Shop West Virginia. Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center. Spark Imagination and Science Center. United Way of Mon and Preston Counties.
So, while we'd like to recognize every nonprofit on Saturday, we selected these individual nonprofits because in the last year they have received grant funding from YCF, and because we have a generous host, President Gordon Gee hosting the celebration in his home. We could not select all the nonprofits. So, we decided to focus on nonprofits that receive grant funding, but that they also impact children in North Central West Virginia with their charitable efforts.
Well, we've already, yeah, the motion is we sign the proclamations.
Yeah.
So, we go ahead and sign the proclamations.
Sure. Yes. Second. Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Shazam, they're signed.
Yeah.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you, Megan. Ben, for your benefit, tonight is, they're doing their presentation to all, the collaboration we do with Mon Arts and Your Community Foundation. The grants that they have doled out, they're going to do those presentations tonight. I think both commissioners are going to be there. I unfortunately have a PT appointment, so won't be able to make it, but we'll be well represented. But thank for all your work on that. And Megan, you're not going to toot your own horn, but Megan, this is a pretty impressive individual here. Megan used to work for me when I directly, I used to directly supervise her. But Patty called me looking for volunteers, which are so hard to find, you know. And I was worried, you know, if I recommended somebody, that they'd actually follow through with it. And this was over a year ago, and here you are, a vital and important integral part of YCF, and I really appreciate your efforts with that. And one other thing, I'm gonna hatchet the name of the recognition that you just won, but it's the female, is it the Female Professionals in Science? Or just young profession?
Women in STEM.
Women in STEM?
STEM.
From the Department of Energy. She received the award from the Department of Energy.
Congratulations.
Basically, documenting what I'm just saying, that she's a wonderful individual. So, thank you very much, Megan. I appreciate it.
Did you want to say anything?
I'm really impressed by the work that, you know, we, when we decided upon this course of action, you know, it was, I think it's been met with great response. Thank you for your help in doing this and in the endeavor.
And I know all three of us are very appreciative, and I do want to also say about Patty Ryan, her entire family, her husband and daughter, basically have become the voice and do a lot of the work for our track. And I really want to thank you because not only are you doing this, but you're doing other things as well, and we still need you and we want you.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Could we do a picture with you?
Sure.
Proclamation, is that okay?
Yeah.
Sure. Just come on up here. Someone will take a picture.
I think we still have a vote.
You wanna hold those? Maybe you can take each hand?
No, you already voted.
Do we vote?
Okay. Yeah, 'cause it's approved in second. Yeah. Make sure. Did you vote?
Okay. Okay.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we each hold one.
Sure. You should each hold one, right?
Yeah. Just step on that. That's all right.
You can tell our offices are under construction. This area back here is getting littered.
We're working hard. All right, got it. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Nope, I understand.
What they're talking about is we're doing construction in our offices, and I use my desk, 'cause everything's on the floor here. So, it's something that, yeah. That, my voodoo dolls are back here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now have number eight. Mon County Abandoned and Delapidated Property Enforcement Agency requests to move the property owned by Rebecca Harmon, described as District Three, Map Twelve, Parcel Eight. Property owned by Ann Fleming, described as District Three, Map Seventeen B, Parcel Nineteen. And property owned by Joseph Triplet, described as District Three, Map Twelve, Parcel One Ten, to the complaint stage. And, Mr. Fitcher, how do we hear?
Members of the commission, before I get into the listing of the properties in question, I would like to take the time to thank Mike Paul, who agreed to be the chairman of the committee.
Oh, good.
Anthony D'Ambroni was the chairman. He is getting ready to retire. Mike was smart enough not to volunteer, but when he was asked to take the position, he agreed to. So, thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Tagged grid. On behalf of the Montegalia County Committee for Abandoned and Delapidated Properties, I would like to request that the following properties be moved to complaints. First one, twenty-two Mickey Row in Cass District, District Three, Map Seventeen B, Parcel Nineteen, owned by Georgia M. Fleming, Jr., Virginia Mae Fleming, and Anne Marie Fleming. Second property, four ninety-five, Number Eight Hollow in Cass District, District Three, Map Twelve, Parcel Eighteen, under the name of William N. Harmon Estate, owned by William Harmon III, the executor, Richard Harmon, Rebecca R. Harmon and her son, William Lawson. The third property is two zero three, Number Eight Hollow in Cass District, District Three, Map Twelve, Parcel One Ten, owned by Joseph Edward Triplet. The allotted times on the notices of violations for these properties have expired, and the properties are not in compliance.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. Any discussion?
No. I appreciate the pictures. I mean, from all the pictures and information you've provided, you guys have done your due diligence every step of the way, and we're now in complaint stage, so.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Thank you. Now, we are very fortunate to have a presentation from the Mountaineer Air Robotics. We're back in our country, and look forward to hearing about.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay. We'll come over. We'll come down.
Are you a guest?
Yeah.
Guess I gotta get my glasses. Only if I want to see my glasses. Be our guest.
Okay. Hello. My name is Ibrukin McCann. I'm the lead programmer on Mars.
I'm Paula Fraser. I am on the mechanical team.
My name is Thomas Gegenbach. I'm part of the electrical team.
My name is Dan McDonald. I'm going in my junior year, and I'm on the mechanical sub-team.
So, we are an FRC team that is based out of Morgantown, and we're part of an overarching company called FIRST, which stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science Technology. And what that really is, is to spread STEM throughout the world so people can get involved with it in synthesis, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. There are four levels. There are junior FLL, FLL, FTC, and FRC. So, first legal league is for ages nine to fourteen. And before Mars, there are only two teams in West Virginia, but after, there are over one hundred. The core values are discovery and innovation, which helps with creativity and problem-solving with the younger team members. So, as they grow up, they know how to do those in their everyday lives. Mars also hosts and staffs the qualifier at WVU and state tournament at FSU, which is in conjunction with NASA and Ivy and V. And we send referees and judges for their other competitions, even if they aren't state tournaments or events.
FRC, this is the level of FIRST that we compete in. The first FIRST competition was in nineteen ninety-two. There, it is the highest level of robotics competition, open to high school students. There are thirty-three hundred teams in North America and over three hundred internationally. We build one hundred and twenty-pound robots that compete on a sixty-foot by thirty-foot game field, and these robots are built in six weeks. This is called the build season, and after that, you have to bag your robot and can't touch it. The game changes annually, so you will have to fabricate and build your robot, and it's going to have to be a different robot every year. You can't use the same design. Well, you could, it just wouldn't work as well. These robots compete in three-v-three, two-minute-and-thirty-second matches. The first thirty seconds are autonomous, wherever it's programming that controls the robot, and the other two minutes use driver-controlled, using radio controllers. So, this year's game is FIRST Destination Deep Space. You had to score hatches and car room. Hatches are about this large. They've got a little circle on them, and you have to stick them on with Velcro, and put a ball in, and the ball will rest up into the hatch, scoring you points. Thirty-second sandstorm period is the beginning of the match. That's the autonomous. Wherever felt will be rolled down over top of the drivers, they cannot see, or over top of the driver's window. And then they have to either drive using a camera or use autonomous, which is completely programming. At the end of the match, you'll have to climb, and we do that using our inverse elevator, which you can see right here and right here. And we use that to push up about here, over nineteen inches, in order to set down our robot on top, and that scores us points. So, we took six weeks to build the robot, just like all the other teams. We had to design and fabricate a robot. We have three sub-teams to effectively build our robot. We've got mechanical, which fabricates parts and builds the frame of the robot. Electrical, which supply power to the robot and all of its parts. And then we've got programming, which programs autonomous and auto sets. So, if you wanted to go to the third level of the rocket, you could just hit a button combination, and it would automatically go there. Mechanical has some future careers, like being an industrial or commercial technician or a mechanical engineer. Electrical can be a commercial or industrial electrician or an electrical engineer. And programming can be a web developer, database administrator. And as you can see here, our robot is taking balls in that intake and spinning them out using wheels and bag motor. We also use hatches. We can place them using pneumatics. Where it opens up, holds the disc, and will place it up against the Velcro and release and come back out. And then that is our elevator that you can see moving up and down, which we use using chains and bike brakes. Wow.
So, we've had another successful competition season this year. We were finalists in South Carolina. We were competition winners in Tennessee. And at the World Competition in Detroit, where they split you up into like six separate events, and then those people like compete within each other, and the winners of those compete against each other, and then you have the winner. We won in our subdivision, which is the first time we've done that as a team, and it's really incredible. This is all possible due to thirty-eight team members representing eight different schools in West Virginia, and four of which are in Mon County alone. Two years ago, we received the World Chairman's Award in two thousand seventeen, and it's the most prestigious award in FIRST, and it highlights teams who embody the mission of FIRST, and they set an example for other teams to emulate. The winners of the World Chairman's, the winners of the Chairman's Award are inducted into the Hall of Fame, and us and twenty-eight other teams make up the Hall of Fame. And every year, you get to go back to Worlds without having to qualify at other events, because they're like, hey, you guys are an amazing team. We want you guys to represent what it means to be a really great team. On top of that, we have a one-hundred percent post-secondary education rate among team members once they graduate compared to the roughly twenty-five percent in the rest of the state.
So, here's a video that kind of talks more about this chairman's efforts and our outreach in the community.
What you see before you are the mountains of West Virginia. Beautiful and truly astounding when seen from here. But what would you see if you looked closer? This is Morgantown in North Central West Virginia, the home of Mountaineer Area Robotics. Each year on the WVU campus, Mars designs and constructs a robot named Marvin. But built in a robot is only a single step towards our goal, to foster change in our home, West Virginia. This mission, to inspire students in rural areas to pursue their creative and intellectual passions, programs like FIRST Robotics, seemed impossible just ten years ago, but now we have a solution. We call this solution the Mars Plan. First step in this plan is engaging communities around us through visibility. Using this engagement as a springboard, we inspire the creation of robotics programs utilizing experience and financial support gained by Mars over the past decade. We then focus on team sustainability by working closely with coaches and students, mentoring and supporting area teams. In addition to our assistance prior to competition, we ensure events are well-run by volunteering as referees, vet coordinators, and judges. This support keeps teams coming back, and in the past ten years, we have more than quadrupled the number of FLL teams within West Virginia. This inherent sustainability and coordination inspires students to continue to participate in higher-level robotics programs. To support this transfer of students, we are now expanding West Virginia's FTC, Vex Robotics, and FRC programs through efforts such as running the FTC State Championship and our FRC offseason event, West Virginia Robotics Extreme, the world's only twenty-six-hour robotics endurance event. Mars expects to see tremendous growth within these programs in the coming years, mirroring our efforts with FLO, which we continue to expand. Mars is now working with the West Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind, West Virginia Institutional Programs, and within county school curriculum to grow the reach of the statewide robotics program to as many students as possible. Outside of our state, Mars also runs programs such as the Mars Team Help Desk, a program that allows other FRC teams to receive assistance in the can, cold, electrical, and software areas, inside and outside of competitive spaces. Mars is now expanding this program to a national level, training other teams to run their own help desks across the country. For ten years, Mars has strived to become a driving force for STEM education in West Virginia. The Mars Plan is working. The state of West Virginia is changing, and we will never let it stop. We are part of a revolution. We are Mars.
A little more specific in some of those efforts we saw in that video. This particular is where the money that we get from the county commission and our sponsors goes. So, about half of it goes into building our robots. The other half of it goes directly back into the community through outreach efforts. So, our first method, whenever, for example, this is using a STEM night that was at Eastwood Elementary, just in the local area. So, we're gonna start out by having a fair slash best-of-the-style to get people interested, right? We showed them our robots that we've shown you in person, right? They drive around. Sometimes the kids get to drive them. And the next step is always to teach them something. So, you see a little desk here. In this particular aspect, we teach them how to make these little toothbrush-sized robots, where like a little, just a little vibrator motor, and they'll run around across the table, kind of like hex books, if you've ever heard of those. And in doing so, we teach the kids about circuits and a bit about design so that, you know, they learn a bit and want to get more excited and go into STEM. But that's where the information aspect comes through. Informational booth, where we get them into these big programs so they can continue to learn outside of our direct influence. And then, once they're in those programs, we can help further this educational setting through helping those programs, to increase in the amount of FLL teams. And as mentioned, this is all part of that methodology we call the Mars Plan, where the goal is to, is to, the goal is to spread STEM right throughout West Virginia, which is sometimes a difficult task. We start by engaging, getting them interested in robotics and STEM. And then we inspire by showing that we're doing these cool things, but they can also do these cool things, whether through those programs or eventually even coming up to our team. That's the sustainability aspect, so that even while we're gone, or we're not directly influencing them. Let's say even we left, like we leave for, you know, three months of the year on competition. These kids are still learning through programs. We've started programs in schools, right? And then with the progression of these programs, we start to get big influence. So, there's a hundred FLL teams or more in West Virginia. At least five to ten kids per FLL team, that's five hundred kids that we can influence just by running a couple of days' worth of events. And the goal, of course, is to create leaders in the end, where in our state, these people learn STEM and can go on to college and get high-level jobs, learning how to deal with these difficult problems, and go to benefit the community, the county, their state, the country. That's the overall goal. And that's all we've got. We have some materials here if anybody wants to look at what we have. But if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
No, I'm.
It's above my head.
I'm very, very impressed. I've been associated with Mars for a while.
Yeah.
I'd like, my other job works at. Yeah, I, my other job works at Department of Energy, and a lot of the people out there are really involved in, in Mars programs, so, yeah, you're preaching to the choir here, and I, but I'm impressed at their level of being able here and talk about the program and see the value in bringing what they've learned to all the other kids. That's what's really impressive is-
What we're hoping that you'll see is that every one of our Mars kids are engaged in not only their STEM skills development, but in their public relations, in their teaching, and in their communications with all levels of society. So every single one of our Mars kids gets opportunities like this to come out and talk to the community. So that's really wonderful, we thank you so much for inviting us.
And I know I'm in Cheat Lake Rotary, we strong supporters of your building and so on, and, and we really appreciate this. I mean, this was nothing around when we were in school, I mean, I was still playing with tiddlywinks.
The opportunities that are afforded are just phenomenal. I mean, I, I know you appreciate it, but growing up in a time when this didn't exist and seeing what's going on, I did, of course, attend the open house, I noticed how many toothbrushes died making, making your toothbrush robots, okay, I was a dentist, just. But really, I was very impressed with the, particularly going to the machine shop and seeing the level of that you get to work with, you know, this is, this is very, very, very impressive.
So I assume you start a new year and collecting new people, I mean, what, what is the next process for this year to go to the schools and students? Do you have something along that line, and do you do a PR to get more people involved?
So, in particular, we do different events, just, basically, after those four months or so of competition, the rest of the years, they get to outreach. So every month or so, we'll have two or three outreach events, like something like this, or sometimes at schools, and it kind of picks up more during the school year. And at those events, we start recruiting, and then during the fall, we run those events. And then during the spring, we start to transition into our own stuff and developing our own kids.
Got you.
Program grow, are you at the point where, I mean, are you, you don't have, do you have, do you ever have to turn anybody away?
We try very hard. Our head coach, Dr. Elsini, he has, he was raised in a, in a situation, a circumstance where he would wanted something like this his whole life growing up. And so he tried, he tries to create almost like a dreamland for these kids to be able to come and tinker. And so we try very hard with our sponsorships to expand each year a little bit more, we have about a forty, but sometimes we go up to forty-six, because we want to include anyone that's interested. The criteria is regular attendance, good work ethic, and good conduct.
And I noticed you say you include eight schools, only four being in this county? Who's the other, where are the other-
Harrison County, Preston County, Preston County, Horn County, Marion County, Harrison County, anything north-central West Virginia, Great Bridgeport, we bring anyone who's willing to drive to us, we'll take. And we find a job for everyone. Now that we have a little more resources, we build an alpha robot on a beta robot, so that we have one robot that the newer kids are learning on and one robot that the more experienced kids are doing for competition. We also make sure that we start from low, so we, we take the younger ones and we match them up and pair them up with the mentors of the older ones, so there's some internal growth going on between our leaders and our receivers. So it's, it's a nice program.
Well, appreciate it, and we're very excited and look forward to seeing what happens this year coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, sure, sure. Want to do it behind here, it might be-
Behind there is great-
How many, how many chairs do we have to go around?
I'll just move this chair in here.
Oh, thank you so much, appreciate it.
And then, we'll squeeze in the back, you guys sort of cut in the front.
I don't know if the county commissioners picked up, but, you know, we received funds for you guys for our outreach the past two years, and we are very thankful for that. So these are some of the, you know, some of the products.
Please make sure you continue to apply in January.
We will, we will, thank you. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, and appreciate you coming here.
Oh, of course, anytime.
Yeah, school starts next week. Okay, thank you again, wow, just wow, that, that's just amazing. Number ten correspondence, just so we know, we got the fourth quarter levy spending report from Bow Park and from the Mountaineer United Soccer Club. And do we have any other correspondence?
We have one, it's from the Bluffs Homeowners Association. They're writing on behalf of their association to request assistance in approving the section of Sunset Beach Road leading up to Morgan Hill Road in Cheat Lake area.
Okay. What we can do is take that letter and let's refer it to the DOA.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll refer that to the DOA, so they, they do know that. Any other communication?
Yes, sir.
Okay, unfinished business.
Yes, sir.
Seeing none? New business, we have consideration of requisition number thirty-two for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
This requisition is in the amount of three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, seven hun, three hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration approved, the network support administration consulting contract with Global Science and Technology Incorporated for fiscal year two thousand twenty.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To consider for approval requisition number eight for the Star City Project Number One Series two thousand twelve TIF Administrative Expense Fund.
This is in the amount of eight hundred twenty-seven dollars, and it is going to-
Reader and Schuman.
Reader and Schuman.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And just for your information, we meet and discuss this before in the work session, so it isn't that we just pass it through here, so I just want to clarify that. Any other new business?
We received a request yesterday for use of the Courthouse Square on Saturday, the seventeenth, from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty, on the group that's requesting it is every town for gun safety. They're wanting to do a rally where they have people come and speak about gun violence on the square.
And I had asked them for a little more information, so we got a clarification, but I want to read the last sentence. This will be a peaceful and informative rally, we will have a sound system embed or project guest speaker voices to the crowd present. So I do, we do need a motion that would allow them to use it.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, good. Okay, that's it, any reports from any elected officials? Come on down.
Just quickly, as you can imagine, we have received bins of tax bills that have been returned to us for incorrect address or undeliverable. Now, those that have come back with addresses, we have already forwarded, forwarded those on, but there are still hundreds upon hundreds that have come back with no forwarding address. So if Ben, if you, or, and, would all-
What do you do then, I mean, basically?
That, I mean, we try, I mean, you know, we, we Google, we use the city directory, the phone book, and try and forward those on, but my request is that we just put out there, if you have not received your tax bills yet, please call the tax office and request that, so that you can get that taken care of, especially so that you get your two-and-a-half percent discount before September one.
Okay.
So just because you haven't received your bill doesn't mean that you're free of paying taxes.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Carrie, do we have anything? Nope, okay, thank you. Okay, reports from county commissioners, Ed?
Well, first of all, we're coming up on expanding our population, so to welcome back WVU students who will be returning soon. But it's also, I'd like to welcome Taylor County that has recently joined forces with Monongahia and Preston County in the CBV efforts, I believe. Really, when we all work together in these endeavors, the rewards will be greater, so welcome. Friday afternoon, we had our inspection of the new extension and four-H center, and in the evening, I did attend the rush run in memory of four-Her Sidney Rush. Monday evening, this Monday, I, my rescue dog, Henry Rufus Hawkins, and myself participated in the Monongahia County Fair Parade. This is going on this week through Saturday at Myland Park, and we would like to invite everybody to come out. Yesterday, we had our meeting at the Myland Park for the extension and four-H center, and today, we have a full day, I believe, from the Arts Mon grant presentation this evening, and I also have planning commission right after that. Friday, I do have a meeting scheduled at Myland, at Myland Park. This is to showcase this area as well as the facilities that we're building for the four-H and extension center to individuals that are coming to look at the possibility of having a breeder show. This is a Junior Angus show that is held once every six years in our state, and we would like to have it here in this area, and so we're, we're really expect, you know, excited of it to show off. Mike has been, Mike Paul has been preparing a map so that these individuals will be able to see the amenities that we have to offer in this area, hoping that this will be a beginning of these type of shows. And lastly, come to the fair, especially Saturday night. This is the night that the children have been working for with their animals, there'll be a sale, shows go on all week long, you know, support your community effort and come out and have fun, thank you.
Thank you.
Since last meeting, last Thursday, I had a open, a cover, a regular call with Open Gov to kind of keep abreast on our, our transparency website and a couple other possible projects that we may be working on. As Commissioner Hawkins mentioned, Friday, we have our regular extension building meeting. Monday, I had a meeting with WV Medicine and Board of Health President, we're following up on something we started talking about months ago, well, actually years ago, about possibilities of interest in our properties, you know, and just to kind of start having that conversation again, and I think it was a very good conversation. As Commissioner Hawkins mentioned, Monday was the Mon County Fair Parade, it was very well-attended. I hope that's a preclude to how well the fair is attended. I know you had a little bit of rain yesterday, but hopefully the rest of the week will, will, will go well. Tuesday, we had our extension building meeting, and I had a couple of separate meetings with IT staff and the prosecutor and clerk's office regarding our IT infrastructure for the county. And then in the afternoon, then after that, I had a meeting with the county planner, so I had a pretty busy day yesterday. As Commissioner Hawkins mentioned, we do have a full schedule today. Tomorrow morning, I have Myland Park Board meeting, and in the evening, we have the MMPO meeting. And then Friday, we have extension building walkthrough, so it's a pretty, pretty busy week. Again, thank you, guys, I'm so impressed with what, I've known what you do, I didn't know to the level of, you know, bringing others along and outreach, and it's very impressive, you guys ought to be commended for everything you do, so thank you for coming, it was really, really informative.
First of all, just to reiterate, the three county commissioners are ecstatic to invite and Bass Pro Shops, they are now coming to us, quote, "to open a new destination retail location to anchor the West Ridge Crossing." And I, and I want to give an understanding to the Mars Group, one of the reasons why we are able to get companies like that is they want to know about the educational system in Monongahia County. And when we are able to show what you do on your own, that helps us. People don't understand, but you help us bring in those companies. So I want you to know, it isn't just for the students, you have opened up and set the precedent for economic growth in our county, so we're very appreciative of that. With Bass Pro, Menards, and hopefully a Thurbrun coming that we can't say, doing the trifecta for that area, this is a, a major economic growth, and we're very, very excited. Someone did ask, and I, and I did want to say, yes, there will be a large aquarium and water features in it, there will be hundreds of trophy fish and wildlife mounts and mules depicting local scenes, make it a unique experience, but it will also feature, and this is what I'm real excited about, the first-ever five-story tracker boat tower right along I-79, it's pretty cool. So we're ve, we're very excited, the three of us, and we want to thank Ryan Lynch to work in with us. It took over a year, and besides all these other meetings, we also are doing other things in the background that people do not realize. I spoke this morning at seven o'clock at Longview Power Plant, it was a great presentation, and they, I just want you to know, are ecstatic with what we are doing with them, and we'll be announcing in the near four weeks. We're very pleased, that working relationship. And finally, we had the Back to School Bash on Friday, and let me tell you, we had over seven hundred and thirty students, we had two hundred lined up before, thirty minutes before we opened. Seven hundred and thirty students, eleven hundred and twenty-five with, students with siblings, we had over five hundred haircuts, we had eye appointments, we had dentist appointments, we had then thirty-nine thousand pounds of food, and we're going to do this again, and these are the kind of things, because of the community got together and did it, and I do want to do a shout-out to Longview Power Plant, they paid for almost twenty-five percent of it, just on their donations. So again, it's been a great week, it's going to be a, continually, we're going to move forward with some other exciting announcements, we're not allowed to say at this time, but we're, we're, the three of us are very excited about the start of a new school, both in the school system and with WVU coming back, and let's go Mountaineers.
Second.
Poppy moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We be out of here.